Okay, I will call the meeting to order. And are there any adjustments to tonight's agenda? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented with flexibility?
So am I.
Okay. All right, we will begin with introduction of guests.
Kiri Curry, Director of High School.
Stephanie Stevens.
Perry Parker.
Miss Camel.
Miss Campbell.
Brother Cooper.
Abigail Schremer.
Yes, Miss Campbell.
Stacy Marcus.
Steve Barone.
Gina Hutchins.
Jessica Van Hoosier.
Mark Mench.
Rob Delacruz.
Roger Hine.
All right, thanks everyone for being here. I know you'd rather be out doing your Christmas shopping, so appreciate that. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to the superintendent. I think she has some special recognitions tonight.
Gina, would you come up here please, Ms. Hutchins? So, I've invited two campuses here tonight. And the first campus that I'd like to recognize is New Hope High School. Board members, I would like to take a moment to recognize New Hope High School for the significant and measurable strides they are making as they work to move out of their current school designation. As you know, school designations in New Mexico are based on multiple accountability measures, graduation rates, attendance, and college and career readiness. New Hope High School is showing strong evidence of improvement across these critical areas, demonstrating that focused effort, intentional planning, and belief in students truly make a difference. One of the most notable gains has been in graduation outcomes. After experiencing a decline of negative eight percent in the year 2223, New Hope achieved a positive growth rate of 7.5% last year, which is really 15%, signaling a meaningful turnaround for students who often face significant barriers to success. Attendance has seen an even more remarkable improvement, rising from 10.3% in 2324 to 90.10% last school year. Additionally, college and career readiness participation increased dramatically from 6.2% in 2324 to 79.7% last school year, underscoring the school's commitment to preparing students for life beyond high school. These results are not accidental. They are the product of a staff that is working together with urgency and purpose to create meaningful change. The New Hope High School team has embraced collaboration. They're examining data, adjusting practices, and consistently asking what is best for our students. Beyond the academics, New Hope High School is also known for its strong commitment to community service, helping students develop responsibility, empathy, and connection beyond the classroom. I commend the staff and the leadership of New Hope High School for their dedication, resilience, and belief in their students. They are changing the narrative of our alternative high school. Their progress is encouraging, and it is clear that they are moving in the right direction with momentum and hope. And I know that they are going to get out of that designation. And Ms. Hutchins is our person at New Hope High School. And I will say, when I transferred her over there, she went ready to go, and she has truly made a difference at that school. And her heart is truly there. And so, I do want to thank New Hope High School under the direction of Gina. And Dr. Parker, would you like to say anything?
No, I would just like to share, when you talk about the momentum, she's done some amazing things this semester to move students toward those graduation credits that they're lacking in. And instead of just loping along, I'd call it, trying to get a credit a semester. They don't have time for that. They really need to work double time. And she's implemented a progressive chart that shows when students get credit, how close they are to being graduates. And then, they've also implemented a new system where every Wednesday, students can take a test to see if they pass in order to earn that credit, credit that they've been working on, but trying to speed things up because they don't have time to wait to earn 20 credits. They don't have that many years, all right? And so, I just say kudos for all you've done. Because that's why you can get the difference in students attending is because they can see the difference and they feel the difference. And it's that continuous quality improvement really is what she's implementing and what you've done so.
Yes. When we talk about that designation, you know, if this is the designation, New Hope was here, they are here now. They are just, they're knocking on that door. And so, we're gonna be so excited to celebrate that when we get over that hump. So, do you have anything to say?
Miss Kenyonas.
You were working and helping me out.
Miss Kenyonas. I just want to say that I was contacted by a mother of a young man that was sent to New Hope, not because of academics, but because he made a bad choice at school. And he was so appreciative that Ms. Hutchins and the others there treated him with kindness and respect instead of acting like he killed somebody. And he was able to stay up with his classes and return back to high school, not behind. And I really appreciate you being compassionate toward those kids. Thank you.
Well, and I know you don't really like being up there. I mean, we know that you like to operate behind the scenes, but what you're doing over there is amazing. And the designation is an important part of it, make no mistake. But more importantly, those kids, just like, they're able to see that they're making that progress, that self-worth and value, they're able to move forward. And that's gonna carry them so far. So, to you and your staff, thank you so much for what you're doing for the kids that have hit a bump for a variety of reasons. And you guys are like, okay, here we go, let's figure this out. So, thank you very much.
My next campus is Sixth Grade Academy, so if you guys will come up here please. These are also people that do not like to be in the spotlight. They work very hard behind the scenes, but we're gonna give them a moment to shine. So, board members, I am proud to recognize Sixth Grade Academy under the leadership of Principal Steve Barone for being named a Spotlight School, ranking among the top 25% of schools in the state of New Mexico. This distinction is awarded through the New Mexico Public Education Department's accountability system and is based on multiple measures, including student achievement, academic growth, and progress toward closing achievement gaps. This recognition speaks to a school that is not only performing at a high level, but doing so with intention, consistency, and a deep commitment to student success. This designation reflects the collaborative, and that's a key word, work of an outstanding staff who set clear goals, hold one another accountable, and work together with a shared sense of purpose. The staff on this campus consistently demonstrate our portrait of a Waukata attributes, showing professionalism, perseverance, teamwork, and a relentless belief in what students can achieve. Their collective effort creates a culture where excellence is expected, supported, and celebrated. What truly sets Sixth Grade Academy apart is its focus on continuous improvement. The staff regularly studies student data with the assistance of Stacy Marcus, our academic coach there, reflect on instructional practices, and make thoughtful adjustments to ensure every student continues to grow. And they're not departmentalized. English is helping math, who's helping history, who's helping the sciences, and then all the extracurriculars. This data-driven approach paired with a high-energy, engaging learning environment results in classrooms where learning is meaningful and students are motivated to succeed. This spotlight recognition is well-deserved, and I commend the whole entire Sixth Grade Academy team for the exceptional work that they do each and every day for our students. Dr. Parker, would you have anything to say?
My monthly reports about our learning walks that we do, and we've really utilized Sixth Grade Academy, I feel like this is funny, as a model for what they're doing for all grade levels. And we started that with a dialogue with math between TMS and SGA. We were like, okay, what are you doing? Because we have to replicate that, and how can we replicate it? And what you ladies have done to share and be vulnerable and have people come in. All of our teachers, ELA and math, have gone in to see what's going on and how can they do that in other places. And so, I appreciate your leadership in that and all the focus you have had, Stacy as well, you know, Mr. Barone breaking it down and taking it to your teachers. So, if you want to visit, you want to do a board learning walk, we could certainly do that.
They're like, what?
Oh, they look so excited at that thought.
Do you have anything to say, Mr. Barone?
I just, I'm just very proud of my staff. I mean, they, they work hard every day. I mean, we're always looking at data. Stacy, I always tell Stacy, tell everybody, she's my right-hand person. We're always looking at stuff. How do we take this back to the teachers? How do we break this down? Let's break it down, let's go show them. And then, everyone, like you mentioned earlier, everyone is working towards the same goal. We have our, even our PE teachers, they're doing stuff with math. While they're doing their calisthenics, their counting, they're doing. So, everyone is contributing to this goal of what we have and what we have going on.
And it's a beautiful transition from our elementaries going into the secondary world. Because when I was the principal at Yarborough, I said, this is your last step of elementary education. You, once you step on Sixth Grade Academy's campus, you're starting your secondary journey. And the transition that this staff does is pretty amazing. I went to the band concert and walked into the back gym, and I didn't even know there were kids in there. And they were doing the warm-up exercises and the Waukata drill by hand signals. And I said, what are we doing? And they said, well, we're being respectful because they're our guests in our other gym with the band concert. And I said, well, show me what you got. And so, the two PE teachers just went, and they were doing the whole thing. And it was just pretty amazing. So, but that's the culture of that school. So, thank you guys.
We drove down by trial. You know, their goal is that nobody really falls through the cracks. And they, that was one of the things that they shared with us, is that they take every kid where they are to move them forward.
Thank you for what you guys do.
And I think many times when the board looks at the data, we see this, and we're like, okay, you know, ensuring, and we're asking them, are they sharing the secret sauce? And, and I think, let's not forget, that is a quirky, quirky age. And so, you throw all of this fabulous stuff into sixth graders, and you have very little turnover, Mr. Barone. I mean, all of those pieces working together for these kids, and every year, it's a new group of quirky little 12-year-olds. And I mean, God bless every one of you, because that's an amazing and yet challenging age. So, you guys do amazing work.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
I do want to bring your attention to some of the dates that I have put in my report. There are several things going on, and I did want to highlight that we will be recognizing Trisha Stevenson tomorrow as she retires. We are sad and not really talking a lot about that. But we will honor her tomorrow in this frame from three to four, as it kind of goes. And then, also, we're gonna have the opportunity to do something really neat. We are gonna be swearing in our new board members along with the city commission board members as well, as a joint effort. And that will take place on January the 2nd at nine o'clock at Livingston High School cafeteria. And all of that information is in there for you in my report.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. All right. You're welcome to stay, but it's, it's okay if you choose to leave also. That's right, that's right. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
I'm gonna open it up to the board for any questions from the director reports.
You answered mine with this Vista stuff, so I was just curious about future moving there, so appreciate it. I did have one on the maintenance and grounds. I know, Jesse, you and I talked about the handrails at the, at the football stadium. Are those?
Those will be planned for this summer, yes, sir.
They're planned for this summer?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We'll be installing them.
Is it gonna be a center rail?
So, it's gonna be a, it'll be a rail. We've gotta cut some of the bleachers out, mount the rail to the concrete, so it'll be every other one, it'll be like a P-shaped rail.
That'll be good. Thank you. Well, while you're up there, Jesse, I have one quick question. It's kind of a random one. After watching more than one football player toss their cookies on the turf, what do we, how do we get that clean? Assure me that it gets clean.
The chunks get cleaned up, but the best, the best UV light from the sun is the best.
Because I know that, I mean, rain, which we don't really get, and we don't have a watering system out there, and, and we know that the turf is getting very dated. And that's certainly something we're trying to find money for. But I just wondered about that.
Yeah, they actually sweep it two to three times a week during, during the season, and then once a month afterwards.
Okay, okay. I didn't know if that was you or Mr. Mirad, and I figured y'all could tag team on that.
We'll let him take care of it.
There you go. You know, you punt. In this world, you punt and say, okay, I've turned it over to the A.D., you know?
I did notice that the trash can was 10 feet away. I saw it, but it was 10 feet.
Yeah, yeah.
It's more dramatic to do it the way you.
That's right, that's right. That way, everybody sees in the stands, and you're like, mm. Yeah. And then, you know, you're hoping nobody steps. So, thank you. Unpleasant, I know, but I hoped that we had some measures in place on that. Any other questions? Yes?
The instruction materials that are available for review, where are those located? Like the mouth materials?
So, the Savis and HMH materials, we will have two Chromebooks set up in the front office, and we'll put out information about the hours. And we'll have the two links to look at all of the resources digitally, rather than bringing the, you know, I think we have about 15 different subjects of boxes that would, you know, pick up the whole room. So, they'll be able to look at them digitally.
When we buy materials from them, is the student stuff all digital? Or do they actually have hands-on textbooks?
So, the two that, that made the cut to the next round both have digital and print resources. And what we have done historically is allowed the campuses to inform us on which pieces they actually want, because not all campuses want the print materials. They feel like it's a waste of resources, and some really do want both. And so, it's a campus decision when we get to that ordering piece.
What if, what if the campus decides digital, and you have one student, like me, that doesn't function well in that world and wants the print material?
So, as, as we move into this kind of hybrid model, all of what is available, like, for us to purchase in print, is also available for the teacher to print for that individual student. And we do have some students who, you know, based on an IEP or a 504, or even just, it's what's best for them, they need that paper copy. And so, rather than giving them a workbook, it's like, okay, because they don't necessarily teach from the front to the back, they will print out what material that student needs.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all right, let's move on into routine matters. We'll take items one through four as part of the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve as presented? I'll take that squeak as a. Okay, thank you. Next item, budget adjustments. I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Do you want to speak to the budget adjustments?
We do not have any adjustments. I'm sure we'll have some.
Those are four, huh?
There's four in there. Are they from last month? Okay, okay, that was just, okay, thank you. All right. We don't have any bids, so we'll move on to donations.
So, we are very thankful for ConocoPhillips. And they have donated money from the Project 4031 for Laces in the amount of $25,000. And so, Director Meeks and Cheryl from Laces went to accept that award. And then, we also have from Delic Logistics. When our Big Blue Band went up to the state competition, they provided monies for them to stay an extra night so they wouldn't have to get up so super early to be in Albuquerque. So, that was something we talked about last month, but it's on the, in the agenda today.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, we certainly appreciate the support.
Yes, very much.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the donations as presented?
So am I.
I'll second. It is open.
All right, thank you. Next item, we'll move into old business. First item is second reading to consider approval of policy I, sections 4550 through 8611, along with the exhibits.
I just, I stand for any questions or recommendations?
I do have a couple of questions. On the special education, it says the intent of the district to maintain a special education student-teacher ratio that allows the teacher to work effectively and efficiently.
Can you tell them the policy, which one?
It's the very first page, I 4550, 11B. Who decides that ratio? What an effective ratio of student to teacher in a special ed classroom is? Who decides that?
That's a good question.
Well, doesn't it say superintendent should coordinate with each school principal and establish a reasonable student-teacher ratio?
Yeah.
Does it have legal reference at the bottom?
It does.
It does.
Normally.
And then, a cross-reference for a special instructor program.
Even for regular ed classrooms?
And there's a lot in here about that. And then, on the next page, it talked about students receiving special education services integrated into a regular classroom. Ms. Makar and I visited about this on the way to Albuquerque. If, if there's a teacher that has a regular ed classroom, and they've got five kids on IEPs, can they have a smaller regular load? Or do they get more than one IA? Or how does that work?
Thank you, Mr. Hine.
Those are fantastic questions. And, so basically, what hap, is there a rule? The answer is no.
Okay.
Not that I've seen, because I've researched it and those kind of things. It's mainly a rule of thumb based on experiences and everything else. And, and to be honest, having five kids in an inclusion class, is that too much? The answer is, Mark, what's my favorite answer? It depends. And so, it depends on the kids and who they are and what the class is. So, obviously, the, and what the purpose of the student's IP is. Because we might have a student that was IEP, in their IEP for socialization reasons because they're in a functional academic kind, kind of class, like, usually typically an elective. And, but usually with those kind of things, we send in IAs and those kind of things. With, with it, along with another teacher possibly, depending upon what it is. When it comes to like math and reading and those kind of things, whenever we, like, we, Mark and I just started, started this month, we're working on next year's schedule. And we tried, the rule of thumb is always a good three, three kids in an inclusion setting.
Okay.
And that's how we base everything off of. And then, plus, we have, I have to work with, as you know, the students in the equalization guarantee formula, you know, they have a, all of our students are 1.0. And then, our students with special needs have a designation of A, B, C, or D. And then, they have a multiplier that goes along with that. And so, I work with, with Dr. Parker about how many FTEs we have. And over the years, we determine how much FTEs we have, and we figure that out based on that. So, it's a, it's a cat and mouse game about the needs of the kids. Example of our Laces program, 10 years ago, was two teachers and 18 I, or 15 IAs in that program. Now, it's four teachers and 29 IAs in that program because they've had so many kids in there. So, we do, based on, that's how we base it off of. Even on gifted, same thing with gifted. We look at gifted FTEs and how many we have across the district. And right now, it comes out to just almost four teachers, and we have four gifted teachers in the program. And right now, I think we're at, like, on the FTEs, we're looking at special ed teachers, I believe it's at 47 right now.
Really?
Yeah, so we're, and we're, actually have all positions filled. So, yeah, so there's nothing in the, there's nothing in, there's nothing in IDA law that says that. And there's nothing, and if you look, the only time you ever see numbers and ratios is with occupational therapy, national standards, but it's not a law. It's just a rule of thumb. And also, with speech therapists, the same thing. You know, how many is too many and how many is not enough, kind of thing. And so, we, that's how I bait, those ratios and case loads, I look at all that stuff. Well, as I'm determining, when we start doing bids coming up here pretty soon, or services for an equity, I base all that. How many speech therapists, OTs, teachers, and all that stuff is based on that. And so, I start working on that now, so that I have an idea by March, how many positions we have, if do we need to move positions around, or, you know? So, we start looking, I start looking at all that.
At positions for budget.
Yeah. And so, reasonable right now, and it depends on what the issues are. And I could tell you right now, rule of good, like, on the resource rooms, you know, I've seen it's, you know, me personally, I taught in with one teacher for 27 kids at one time, many moons ago. But that's the way we can make it work. But at that time, the, it depended on what I was teaching. And I wasn't teaching a hardcore math or language arts class. It was, mine was a social studies class at the time, 25 years ago. And so, now, my rule of thumb is always on the resource rooms, it's always six to eight kids, depending upon who they are and what the issues are, what the classes are, and then on the inclusion, it's around the three to four kids in a class.
Okay.
And, and right now, the ratios are pretty good right now in our district. And if they need an extra teacher in there, then that's what we, on the scheduling, we start, we put an extra teacher. And then, this year, we had, for example, we had some, we're able to make it, maneuver some things around with our special ed staff at the high school, where actually do some inclusion teachers in the science and social studies classes.
Oh, good, okay.
We're able to figure that out, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Did that help answer it?
Yes.
And it does go into specific things on that in NIMAC, as far as it shall not exceed this and the special ed.
Yeah.
He did a better job.
Oh, yeah. No, I appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem. Any other questions?
Other questions?
Yes.
Okay.
I have about three or four.
No, you're good. No, that's what it's for.
When we look at the, like, the max math textbook adoption, are we looking at a lot of continuity, like, from Taylor Middle School to the high school curriculum? Do we, do we try to match those up? Because I had some teachers ask me why they don't take the same types of tests. And it's, some of that state designation, not our designation. The same end-of-year tests from the same companies at, like, Taylor Middle School and at the high school, why things are so different from place to place? Do we have a lot of control over any of that?
So, historically, the testers are. Yeah, so historically, the tests are, are, so I Ready is completely separate from a curriculum. It's a standalone assessment, but, um, each publisher has an assessment. And so, um, the leadership team will look at the assessments that are available and, and talk about whether or not that's appropriate, because we don't want to test kids just to test them, right? And so, but in, in this specific adoption, this, um, and the previous two, we really are looking at what is available for a K twelve adoption. So there were a lot of materials we did not review, because really we are trying to emphasize that vertical alignment, um, as much as we can. And so these two publishers that made the cut and the others that we reviewed that are on that list in my report, they were the only companies that had a K through twelve plus algebra one, algebra two and geometry. Um, you know, path, uh, vertically, vertical pathway. Um, Carnegie was one we reviewed, um, Great Minds, which is Eureka, which we've used in our previous adoption. They're only K eight, and so we didn't even look at them because it doesn't transfer into the high school. Um, same with Curriculum Associates, which is I Ready, they were only K eight. And so we didn't look at them to review, because again, we're really trying to maintain that K twelve. And not just for instruction, but, um, do their assessment pieces give us data that we can use from year to year? So, to that question.
Okay, good, thank you. Skip that one and ask it later. Oh, and class interruptions. I know that very last page talks about limiting class interruptions where the classroom not be interrupted by the use of inter-school communication system unless authorized. I, I hear a lot of complaints from the high school teachers about all the interruptions during class time at the high school. Pardon this interruption, would you please send so-and-so to the office? And I don't know if we cut down on sending IAs to classrooms to get kids, because they're disrupting other classes or, or what, but they're, I, I, I hear a lot of complaints. Okay, thank you. That's all. The others I can ask later.
I have a couple of questions. On I seventy-one hundred, it's talking about the class rankings and grade. And the last bullet says only courses identified as honors will earn additional point two five or zero two five points added to the overall and solid grade point average. And I remember last year, I think we addressed the, the college classes. Does this, did we just label those as honors classes? Is that the way that's covered, or?
This was brought to the board October the eighth, twenty twenty-four, so.
I just want to make sure we've got that this is accurately represents what we decided back then.
I think, yes, it, it should.
I think, I think that, because it was a big conversation, but let's.
Right, so.
Do you want to look at this, Gary? Just make sure. But I, I'm almost positive that it's.
If it's the one we changed, uh, we made sure that it aligned with our practices.
Yeah.
And the credit was being given for.
So those, those classes are just labeled as honors classes now, is what?
Or.
So the kids who are in early college, are technically all of their classes considered honors classes?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get.
Yeah.
No.
I think we need to go back and look at this. I'm looking at the minutes right here.
I was gonna say, we talked about.
It would be September's meeting, no, no, October's meeting.
Because some of their, I mean, it was they on the credit as opposed to the honors credit. Right?
Yeah, so we need to re-look at this one.
Yeah, I think we, we had a fee.
Yeah, we had a long discussion, I remember. I just don't, I didn't go back and, I'm sorry, I didn't go back.
We did, we, I think we had two board meetings about it. I mean, we had some.
Yeah, agreed.
Well, it makes me wonder if that's why it was worded, only those designated as honors classes.
Because it just, yeah, because it says in the minutes is on a motion by you and second by Dale approved it as presented. So we'd have to look at the copy, you know, because in the minutes, but, but.
We will go back and look at this.
Okay, perfect.
Yes.
Make sure.
And I had just one more question on the graduation requirements for physical education. It's I seventy-three eighty-two. I think I may have just answered my question by rereading the policy. I was gonna ask, because the, the last bullet says successful completion of three of the following extracurricular sports seasons in grade nine through twelve, and cheer is not listed there. But I guess up in the bullet above that, it's, a couple above that, it says two semesters of high school cheer. I didn't see that bullet.
Okay, because, and if I remember correctly, cheer is not considered a sport? I mean, I know cheer people are gonna like throw something at me, but isn't that right at NMAA? Uh, what, what, what was it in the handbook, Mr. Murad, about?
No, they consider it a sport.
Right. So we need to add that down here.
So we could take it off of that bullet and move it down under here, okay.
So band is.
Maybe I'm thinking about the junior.
So, okay, so we'll add cheer here.
Because remember, powerlifting wasn't for a long time, and then it just got added.
Yes, okay, add cheer here.
Okay. So then that next bullet where it says marching band or cheerleading, maybe that needs to also be looked at.
Because we have it up there, um, it's kind of redundant, actually.
Mm-hmm.
Two semesters of high school marching band, two semesters of high school cheerleading, two semesters of any combination of athletic periods, marching band or cheerleading. But this is talking about mixing it, so we'll, we'll fix it.
Okay.
Okay. So, fix.
Okay, there it says two semesters, but down here it says three.
It's just extracurricular sports seasons, is what that, I just read that too. Didn't say anything about the semester.
Oh, okay, right, okay, thank you, that helped.
That's all I had, thank you.
Oh, thank you guys. That's why it's great, so many people to look at it, because things get missed. Okay, and I'm completely on the wrong board meeting. I've moved it around so many times. I'm like, I'm in October of twenty-four, you know, wondering why nothing is matching up, so. Okay, alright, so we got the noted changes and we got the questions answered, okay. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve policy I, those sections listed with the noted changes?
I saw them.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Next item, second reading to consider approval of the Lovington Schools Booster Club Handbook.
Okay, Mr. Murad and I will stand for questions.
It's all the changes listed in there, so I'm gonna open it up to board members for questions or comments. Again, thank you for, uh, making those, uh, suggested adjustments.
Just a little more.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Um, so on the top of page seven, and then it says, um, the second bullet there. So like, elect or appoint officers who do not have a talde with participating in LHS program during the current school year.
Yeah, that was changed in another section, I just missed that.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was getting at, it's, it reads in the other way.
I didn't see that.
That's alright.
Thank you. So.
Yeah, page eight, it says election of this is not mandated.
I think how we worded it was highly recommended.
Right, yes, sir. And then, I, I had a question on, on page thirteen. Talks about this spending, let me find, I've made a note here, uh, best practices is, uh. Yes, no, I'm gonna get on page thirteen. Um, I just was curious on the third bullet there. On all financial expenditures, um, should be approved through a vote of the general membership. So I, I know just from kids being in sports and whatnot, that, that there's a lot of times where, hey, we need to buy decorations for something, or we need to buy some food for this cookout or whatever. So would that financial expenditure to buy that, would they need to go to vote? Like, would they need to, that's what it says here, that it would be needed to vote through the general membership. I- is there a?
Prior approval. Is that, that's the question you have.
Question, like if, if.
Financial expenditures must receive prior approval.
Approval, then it's through a vote by the general membership. I think right now, it's been the officers and the coach. The coach comes to officers and says, hey, we're cooking hot dogs, we need some buns or whatever.
Right, I, I would rather have it just be the officers and the coach voting. But I know that some operate with general members voting, so if you're okay with it, I would make it just.
But the prior approval wouldn't have to necessarily be a meeting, it would be.
A quick phone call, they could do that.
To the, I like the officers.
That's what I'm asking. This says the general membership, and so I'm thinking, alright, how are we gonna get thirty parents to vote on this?
You change that to officers?
Absolutely.
I one hundred percent agree with it. I'm saying, to me, it'd be difficult to get a vote from thirty people. I'm gonna have to call a meeting or text or.
So maybe it's not vote, but approval?
Somebody need to change the general membership to.
To officers, I would think, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Approval, not necessarily through a vote, but must receive prior approval from.
And take our vote.
Officers, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the officers to vote.
They could, they could say yea or nay.
Three of them say no.
That's right. No buns.
No buns. You didn't vote for buns.
If we can go back to number seven, page seven there, where it talks about travel. I know that in the past, um, yeah. The top bullet there says, they, these are things they should not do, booster clubs must not. Sign contracts or directly pay expenses from booster club accounts for student travel arrangements. So, so how does that work when we charter a bus, right? Doesn't the booster club a lot of times pay for those chartered buses? And so how would that be, how would that be handled now, I guess?
We are the ones that have to pay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Because I want to know. I don't want them to sign it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
For student travel.
So when the football team charters a bus?
I want to know.
But does the school pay for it? Does the school pay for it though?
I'm sorry?
Does the school pay for it?
No, but I want to know so that I can tell Bob we don't need a bus.
Okay, so it says directly pay expenses from booster club accounts for student travel arrangements. So they shouldn't be paying for that bus then. Am I reading that right?
They must not sign contracts.
Yep.
Or directly.
Pay for.
Pay for, from the account for student travel arrangements.
So would the.
That are not, that are covered by the school.
What I'm hearing is before they sign that contract, that they, he needs to know what's going on. So we probably just need to word that.
Yeah, something like, like in that second sentence, I need to put something similar in that first sentence.
Exactly, that last part of the, I, yeah, to where there's, because you do need to know that.
You do need this, but I, I want to know.
Hundred percent agree, you need to know and, and so we don't cause that, but I'm just saying the way this.
Because that'll get us caught.
Reads.
I will tell you that we, um, have had, or having, um, a sport that has, we have already secured a driver for a bus to go out of town. And we found out last minute that they had secured a charter bus. Well, the driver that we secured is out of a job and he turned out another job for that. So we, we need to know ahead of time, because then that activity driver is gonna get upset.
But I think, because it's not in writing, that's what gets us in a bind, so I, I.
Yeah, I agree. And then I can see here where it say, well, we're gonna get a charter bus, here's the bill, I mean, you know, and, I don't know, I just.
Something about without prior, uh, notification of the athletic director.
Sure, I think like you said, just the following.
Right, and Mr.
Must be approved in advance and signed by the athletic director or something like that, you know?
Because sometimes we have our new coaches and they need to know the rules, which Mr. Murad goes over every year at the very beginning, but it's a lot of information.
It is, it is.
And if that, you're securing a driver, you're talking to financial office about this is how much booster clubs pay and this is how much the school might pay. Um, the contracts, you know, it's all those things, so definitely, but we just need to reword that to, that reflects that.
Because not the signed contract without notifying.
Without prior notification of the athletic director or something along those lines. This is the guy that, that does the magic for me.
That's Buzz Man.
He's doing a great job explaining this, but the, the reason to kind of answer your question. He has to know because he notifies us, because, uh, say for instance, the, the trip that Mrs. Q was talking about. They're gonna take the trip and then they pay for it with a credit card, and then they come to us and then I go to the business department and then they're wanting their money back. So knowing ahead of time, then we could go ahead and help with the PO and do the paperwork correctly, so we can make sure that they get their money back. So, if the charter bus is three thousand dollars and it's a trip down to Las Cruces, we pay seven hundred thirty-four dollars and normally that we would spend to transport our kids there. So then we want to make sure that they get credit for that. So by him knowing ahead of time, we can avoid a lot of problems. Yeah, I, I'm not saying anything about you knowing ahead of time. I, I think that's a good thing. I think what I'm saying is this, what we've decided needs to be reworded.
That clarification.
Because this is saying that the booster club cannot pay directly for that, so that's all I'm saying, so.
Um, I have Mr. Dunlap's voice is a little sketchy. Oh, that, I, yeah, I'm not gonna say that. Yeah, I'll go with sketchy.
Sketchy.
Um, he did have a couple of questions, and maybe it's covered in the Athletic Handbook, but if not, it talks about, uh, booster club members having keys to the gates. And I know that's an administrative issue, but is there something that needs to be put in that booster club? Or is it the hand, the Athletic Handbook for the coaches, et cetera, um? No, they're, they have them. His understanding is they have them and they're opening up the gates.
If they have them, I, I didn't issue them.
Right, right. And so that, I think that may be something that needs to be looked at, but they are letting many people in prior to.
So we need to, um.
Yeah. Yeah.
No, we just need to gather those keys back.
Yeah, so anyway, and then the other question he had was, the booster club funds are not depleted at the end of the year. They are, are they carried over year to year, or is the goal to deplete them at the end of the year?
I've heard both, um, comments from coaches. Some need the money because they plan on certain things and some think they should spend it all. I've always been of the belief, we're gonna raise the money for these kids, we spend it on these kids, and the next kids raise the money for what they need to do. But you do understand that there's times, I, I don't have an example off the top of my head, but there are times when they, they need seed money to start.
Well, yeah, and some, so many of your, I mean, if you've got a sport, any of our sports, and you've got ninth through twelfth graders playing, then, you know, this one's gonna drop off, but then there's gonna come some more in there. And so I would be concerned that we were trying to empty the coffers.
Right.
Because I don't think that's best for kids, when, as the season goes on, you would need that, you know?
That's why purposely, purposely didn't address that.
Do what?
I purposely did not address that.
Okay, that's gonna be.
I want them to figure that out for themselves, depending on their own needs.
Okay, that's a booster club ish, okay.
Because there's, there was one club that had ten grand coming into this year.
Get them on the phone, we need some things, you know?
Right. Well, football and cheerleading raise a lot of money.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, any other questions? Oh, yeah. Did we have any in the red? When, okay, good.
Not that, they show it on paper.
Okay.
But, I'm not their accountant.
There you go. Okay, alright. Thank you, Mr. Murad. Are there any other questions about this booster club handbook? I know it's a lengthy process, and I feel like it's a fluid document that we'll probably be looking at regularly, but I think it's a great start so that the booster clubs are well aware of what the expectations are and, and, you know.
And I'm glad you said that, because I, I think every year we should look at the handbook and the booster.
Just like we do the others.
Because, you know, because every, every, you know, Mrs. Q says, well, that's not right. After, but after, after it happens, you know, so we want to just adjust those things.
And then everybody is aware, like you say, on some of those things.
Black and white.
You know, we need to look at this.
Alan, I appreciate Mr. Murad taking the time to build this from the ground up, and this is gonna be very. build this from the ground up, and this is gonna be very powerful for our booster clubs and our coaches to know in us, but I would like to bring it back to the board either in June, May's kind of crazy, so June's, the booster clubs have it right on the onset of the school year.
I think that the clarification points that you've put in there are gonna help everybody, so.
So that could implement it now, we're gonna implement it next year, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm just, no, this is a good thing to go ahead and give our spring sports and winter sports, but we will bring it back so that everybody has it at the very beginning.
Does anything need to be, I, I'm understanding you want to look at it before the beginning of next school year as well?
Yeah.
And make that an annual thing, like you said.
There's always gonna be, see, well, what about this, what about that? We didn't address this.
Right, right.
Okay.
And this is my first foray into this, so, flame bling.
Turned out well.
I think it's good.
You did great.
Thank you.
All right, are there no other questions and adjustments that have been made note of? Do I hear a motion to approve the booster club handbook as presented with the adjustments noted?
So I'm moving.
All right, thank you. We'll move into new business, consider approval of the American Tower lease agreement.
You were provided information, Carrie Gray did a great job of pulling all that information and putting it in a table for you, and then giving you more information about the tower that we have. So we have two towers, we have the American Tower and we have the AT&amp;T Tower. AT&amp;T Tower is located on the high school football campus, football field, and this American Tower is on Commercial and Avenue D. So what is being requested is, what we're looking at is the American Tower. So from my calculations, which this is not, you know, other math people in here, this contract with American Towers expires in the year 2055, we have 30 years left. So at the lease of what we have been receiving from these towers is 22,000, right? When you look at the last couple of years that Ms. Gray provided for us. And there was a year where we were in the 30s, but if we just took the least amount of money and we were to sell, we would lose 437,560 in the next 30 years. So I think the question is, well, we, the question is, do we want to sell, or do we want to keep this? And we're looking at sustainability, we're looking at the future for Livingston School District, so, and that was just me doing the math, it's not on there. So the average was 28,252 dollars the last three years, and so, so for the next three years, I did that wrong, the next three, 30 years would be at the tune of what we would be getting is 847,000. That's where I got that we would lose 437, so. I think you guys just need to decide what you want to do with that tower. And every year, we get a letter, the last couple of years, we've received a letter from American Tower wanting to do something, so I don't think this is a one and done that we decide now for the rest, for the 30 years, I think we're always gonna be approached by American Tower. Okay, so I, I just, I open it up to you guys for discussion.
Comments from the board?
Do I?
Why, why sell it?
Yeah, I, I, I agree, and I, we've discussed this, Ms. Maker and I, and I, I don't think, and this is my opinion, but I don't see them coming out there and just taking the tower down at the end of the tenure term, you know, you know what I mean?
But it is a possibility.
It is a possibility, it is a possibility, but I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't feel that way personally, so.
The way we're making more valuable is to take it down.
Yeah, if it took it down, you could build a parking lot like we talked about, you know, or, I mean, you, you could do other things with it, so.
As far as taking it down.
But this is, let me make, just make this correct, make sure I'm thinking this correctly. So this 410,000 is just for the 10-year term, right? It's not for the 30 years. It's just for that 10-year term, and then they have to renew. Is the way I'm understanding.
Yeah, they're basically just wanting to give us a well-up sum for 10, or break it down into 10 payments, which would be a total of 416, so.
Yeah.
I guess it's the interest or whatever, so to have to, yes, it says either or. And if we look back at the one from last year, it's a totally different, they were wanting to, they were wanting to adjust the rent, and then.
I think it just has to be clear, though, that they don't have a 30-year option here, so really, it's not, they have the 30-year option, but they have to renew it every 10 years. You know what I mean? So in all reality, you're, you're, you're losing, what, $6,000 here if you took the loan sum, is all. And then they still have the option, they still have to renew it, so.
Well, I think the reality is, if it was not cost-effective for them, they would not be pursuing that, and they're, they're, we, we are not who they are concerned about. I mean, I know they're trying to make an offer, but I think that if I understand the superintendent's recommendation is that we just continue with what we've got, is that after visiting with Carrie Gray?
Yes, that is my recommendation. Very much. This shouldn't be.
And I think that's what they were, they were asking about, he had wondered why the rent was going up and down. I think they were, last year inquired about changing the rental amount, you know, so.
We don't hear you.
We get, we get the different number on, on the monthly basis. And I think you'll notice that in each year, there's that $2,000 that goes up. Carrie, did you want to speak on this?
It did go up from 6,000 to 8,000.
And every, every year, it'll go up $2,000 more.
That's my understanding.
Yes.
And then, as you can see, that's the superintendent.
As the superintendent mentioned, it has been going up, last year was 39,000, and you can see, it's already 17,000 as of November, so you're looking at definitely at least 35,000 again, so I, I, I recommend keeping it at this.
Okay.
Again, the only danger is if they decide to take the tower down, but I, then that's gonna be another expense for them anyway.
Like Mr. Dunlap said, didn't that land has a different value on it?
Exactly.
And you have.
And that's gonna be a huge expense to them anyway, so I don't.
You have 10 more or whatever, however many more, six more years, so.
All right, so based on the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion to continue with the lease agreement as it currently is? Is, is that the best way to put that? Okay, so I'm moving a second. All right, thank you.
Second.
To make, to make no changes. And everybody has to remember this conversation, so when they come back up next November, please remember this conversation, because we're like, what did we say?
Yeah.
That's right, we can pull it up, thank you. All right, moving on to the next item, consider approval of the amended FY25 regular audit.
Yes. Okay, Ms. Gray, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there had to be an adjustment to our first requisition of this audit when we, this is our regular audit, due to federal government not allowing the state auditor to move forward. Will we receive word that we are moving forward and we're gonna be able to do our regular audit, actually tomorrow morning, we'll get to close that out. So we are not needing to ask for this additional money in amendment to the first contract, so does that make sense?
So we need to.
We are not gonna have to pay this.
We are not gonna need to act on this?
Correct. We found out at the first of this week, or I'm sorry, at the end of last week, that they can come, continue to do one report. They thought with the new federal guidelines that they would have to do two reports, one being the audit, one being a single audit. They did receive guidance that one report is all. They had just prepared this in the event that we needed a separate yellow book on it, but we do not, so tomorrow we will be exiting with one document.
Do I hear a motion to table this motion, this?
So I'm moving.
Okay. All right. That was easy peasy. Okay. Uh, at this time, is there any public comment for any items listed on tonight's agenda?
Big crowd.
Okay, hearing none, this concludes the regular portion of our meeting, we will, do I hear a motion to move into executive sessions?
Hold on.
Okay, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.